Councilmember wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Either the public or a council member may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda at that time prior to council's vote. First item is approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes for December eighth, two thousand and twenty. Second item is approval of the expenditures voucher of January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one. Third one is approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant liquor license for Rogers Incorporated, DBA Shiloh Steakhouse located at five Veatch Street, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal fermented malt beverage liquor license for Safeway Store Forty-Six Incorporated, DBA Safeway Store number eighteen ninety-two located at fifteen eighty East Main Street, Cortez. E, approval of a renewal hotel and restaurant license for liquor for Lakeside Lanes Incorporated, DBA Lakeside Lanes located at four ten Lakeside Drive, Cortez. F, approval of a renewal liquor store license and tastings permit for West Slope Liquors Incorporated doing business as West Slope Liquors locating in at twenty-two twelve dash one East Main Street, Cortez. And final one is approval of the modification of premises for THA Corporation DBA, The Herbal Alternative located at fifteen thirty-one Lebanon Road, Cortez. Okay, do I hear any motions on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second then. Medina, Medina.
Hi.
Jazzy.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Dobree.
Hi.
Huckins.
Hi.
Lady.
Hi.
Thank you. There are no presentations tonight. Under public hearings, the first item is Resolution Number One, Series Twenty Twenty-One, City Planner Tracy Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Mr. Mayor, so I contacted Mike Green about this just to make sure I can be a part of this vote. But I did attend one of the preliminary meetings, like discussion meetings about this project with Opinion Project. But after discussion with Mike, it seems like it was okay, but just wanted to disclose that to you guys in case there was any issue with council.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, thanks, sorry, Tracy.
Go ahead, Tracy.
No problem. Okay, hopefully you can see the basic site plan for this project. And the vicinity map, so the project in question is a ooh, um, lot one of the Chisholm Minor Subdivision, this property is located on, it's north of Empire Street. Sorry about that. Here, got a mind of its own. It's, um, north of Empire Street and just west of the an existing apartment complex in the Monizuma County Combined Court Building. The project is on the lower half of the lot, the southern half of the lot, so it's not going to be the whole entire property. The proposal is for fifty units consisting of one to three bedrooms and four buildings. Most of the units are in three buildings and the building A is going to be amenity facilities, which will include laundry, a leasing office, and a community kitchen. The property is owned R two, and in this zoning district, a conditional use permit is required for the use. The proposal meets setbacks, height requirements, and the density of one unit per three thousand square feet. Project will take access off of Empire. And the proposal meets parking for one, two spaces per residential unit, and they have shown a hundred spaces on the property. They are showing two loading spaces, which are not technically required because each of the individual buildings is below the size for requiring a loading dock. However, a loading space is not a bad idea. The applicant has shown conceptual landscaping on the plan. A border to the north of the property is vacant land, and to the east is multifamily apartments. And there is single-family residential uses to the west and south. And on the, kind of the northeastern side again is the combined courts. Submittel is conceptual because we do not have one hundred percent construction drawings. And this is appropriate for a conditional use permit, so some of these items will need to be addressed at building permit because this project will not be coming back for a full site plan review, which would normally, if it were required to go through a site plan review, we would get construction, more close to construction drawings and vet it through a site plan review process. So that's why some of the conditions are written the way that they are. The applicant must demonstrate it meets the compatibility criteria because it's a conditional use permit. And those criteria are in the land use code, and I'm going to go through them briefly as written in the staff report. So criteria one is that the post-conditional use is compatible with adjacent existing uses and other allowed uses in the zoning district. Such compatibility shall be expressed in terms of appearance, architectural scale, and features, site design and scope, landscaping, as well as the control of adverse impacts, including noise, vibrations, smoke, fumes, gas, dust, odor-related glare, traffic circulation, parking, or other undesirable or hazardous conditions. So, you know, you would take that condition and see what's applicable for a multifamily residential project. So in terms of architectural scale, I'm trying to get this to click, it's not working very well. This is the proposed facade of the building. They are proposing landscaping, again, it's conceptual, so, you know, you would have to trust that they install it more or less in the spirit of what you see in the conceptual drawings at the time of building permit. If you feel that landscaping is something that makes this a project that's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So the site is located immediately next to multifamily apartments, and it's also near integrated healthcare, Monizuma District Courts, and the sheriff's office, other single-family residential uses and vacant land. Due to the mix of uses and the transition from single-family residential to multifamily and the property being zoned R two, the proposal is compatible with adjacent uses, staff's opinion. Again, they meet setbacks, and they're proposing landscaping, they have met the requirements for two spaces per unit for parking. And Engineering and Public Works did not have issues with the proposal with regards to access and circulation. Condition number two, the proposed conditional use has incorporated design features sufficient to protect adjacent uses. So the site is designed so that the residential area is located on the interior of the lot. There is some buffer between the buildings and the the adjacent uses due to the way they've designed their parking, and they do have this, these landscaping areas kind of on the periphery. Condition number three, all proposed accessory uses must demonstrate they are necessary and desirable. They are not proposing accessory structures, though they're not shown on the plan. They're, the, condition number four deals with adequate public services, and they are already available for existing and proposed, sorry, they're already available for the proposed structure and should not cause a reduction in services. And again, this would be addressed through the agency comments, and I'll get to those here in a second. Item number five, provisions for proper maintenance of the building, parking, and loading, drives, lighting, signs, et cetera. This is an item that the applicant will need to address for the appearance of the property and safety and comfort of their residence. So they have provided in their narrative provisions for maintenance, so they will have to adhere to that. And then condition number six deals with adopted hours of operation, which do not apply for the residential use, and then it meets the parking requirements. And if they put up any signs, they will need to get a sign permit and compliance with the city's land use code in place at the time. C dot did not have any concerns with this project, so there's no concerns about highway access. So next is the agency review process. This was sent to other agencies for comments. And of note, the fire department did indicate that they may need some fire suppression, fire hydrants, or, you know, different accesses to the building to, for fire, you know, fire trucks access. So that's, basically, this, the, any concerns the fire department had, they felt could be addressed at the time of building permit. And the applicant has stated that they're committed to working with the fire district to meet all fire and life safety requirements. And all of the structures will be fully sprinkled. So it doesn't seem like there's any outstanding issues, although the applicant will need potentially to install some features that would bring this into compliance with the fire district at time of building permit and once they have architectural drawings. There was a question from Parks and Rec Director about connecting the property into the natural area. And the applicant stated they're not intending to connect with the trail at the Carpenter Natural Area for this project at this time, but they do see a value in providing it. We'll discuss that during future development phases on the parcel. There was an issue with there not being a appropriate concrete pad for a dumpster, which again, it seems as though they could find a location for that and address that at building permit. And that's because the city code requires that they have no adequate access to the dumpster per the city code. So again, that's a condition of approval, and the applicants are where they will need to address that. Basically, the sanitation district stated they needed a grease trap for the community kitchen, and the applicant stated they would provide that in their design. And those are the main comments that would require any considerations later. This project does meet many of the policies in the comprehensive plan. This slide kind of adequately shows that for some of these. There's a policy five point one point one two to use land flexibly and promote infill opportunities. Again, policy five point four point one encourages infill development on vacant land, which will complement the established character of the neighborhood. Policy five point four point two encourage new development on vacant or underutilized land. Policy six point one, develop and maintain safe, desirable, and quality housing for all current and future residents with emphasis on affordability, attainability, and revitalization of neighborhoods. Goal six point one point four strongly encourage development of new housing on surplus vacant and underutilized land. Six point four is expand opportunities for quality housing that is affordable and meets the needs of all residents. And an ongoing objective is to improve the rental housing stock in Cortez to make quality rental housing affordable to those resident not own a home. And then policy six point four point two nine, which is to promote high-density development within walking distance of Main Street by giving preference to quality multifamily residential developments and considering opportunities to rezone or higher density, well, that doesn't matter. So this project does meet many of the comp plan goals, and I believe that is all I have to present. I'm going to turn it over to council if you wish to ask the applicant any questions.
I'd like to say a few comments. This is Rachel. I, after looking through this packet, I have concerns about the entrances onto Empire Street. Because you just mentioned that this is in line with the comprehensive plan. And you say that the master streets plan is part of the comprehensive plan, but it seems to be in direct conflict with the master streets plan. Because you just showed a picture that had a sixty-foot easement. And the way you define arterial roads, which I would consider Empire Street, is we don't want private entrances onto arterial. So what would the consequences be as Empire gets more and more busy? And we end up needing that road access right next to it to have all those entrances in a row? And if Phil is on the call, like, what would it cost to develop that road to help with, with this project? And the next phases to kind of have a more collector or local road that they're serviced off of?
Well, the fact is, is that, that this Chisholm subdivision, the two lots, that easement, which you're talking about, which is on the western boundary of this parcel, is that, is just that. It's an access and utility easement, it's not a right-of-way. So I don't even have the ability to say, I don't want you to have an access here, I'm going to build this road. You know, or I'm going to have you partner with us to develop this road, and then you have access off of it. It's not even in the wheelhouse yet because I don't, we don't own that right-of-way in fee simple for road development.
How do we turn easements into right-of-ways?
Well, in something like this, Mike's waiting to chime in, but I'm sure it has to do with development and, you know, as opposed to outright purchase, but, Mike?
We've been talking about this, this particular piece, and it came up. Cities and towns own the streets in fee simple, so they're not really right-of-ways, that's the term that everybody uses, but they're like a deeded land. You own, like, the land you own your house on. Counties have right-of-ways or easements across. I, you know, this plan for this particular thing, that sixty-foot comes up in the next parcel. I don't know whether we need it or not, we would probably have to pay something for it, or trade something for it, or do something. It would go out to a street off of Driscoll that might come across. And it wouldn't get us anywhere anyway, I don't think, because of where, what's out there to the north, but I'm not sure. So nobody's posted any problems, C dot or anybody, about the entrances onto Empire. And this is just a change of use, so I don't know that we can, Tracy can correct me if I'm wrong, but it gets a little sketchy as to why you can say, no, I won't let the change of use or not. And this is more site plan than conditional use in my thinking.
I understand Rachel's take on this, though, I mean, it's about access and proximity of accesses and sightlines and whatnot. And if, you know, the fact is, is that if that big parcel to the, I guess that would be the northwest, ever does get developed, and we do need a need, see a need for Driscoll, that Driscoll tie-in to be connected, we could always, we have acts, we have control of our own roads, and we can say, we want to eliminate this access on the west side, we want them to tie into our street further inland, so we don't have those two driveways right there. I mean, we can work this out, you know, as this thing progresses. But right now, without that fee simple roadway, I can't develop it.
And it doesn't go all the way through, if I remember correctly, right? It
No, sir, it doesn't.
It stops and narrows down to like a, I don't know, a fifteen-foot. This ain't the best piece of land for to do streets on.
Well, it seems for, for infill purposes, you've got, I mean, from that overhead picture, it looked like it was vacant, private land, like, east or west of this as well. So I'm just thinking, long-term, it seems like a road would naturally go there and be, what, a north extension of Harrison? And tying into, into Driscoll?
There's no streets.
And I understand it probably would cost us money, but have we even, you know, how much would it cost us to get that right-of-way? Maybe putting some upfront money and planning for the future effectively, like, like, why we have a master streets plan would be worth spending the money. I guess you're right, we're going off of our old master streets plan because the new one isn't adopted yet.
The other thing is there's no street across the street from this, as I recall going anywhere. You're over in the rodeo subdivision, and I think this would be a little bit east of where the street into rodeo is, and that street dead ends at the Legion and doesn't go all the way through. And then, like I say, I don't, I'm not sure, talking about making them build a street or give us a street in a parcel that isn't really part of this is where we need to be going. Maybe we should, if I could suggest that we get back to the use change, the conditional use permit, which is what we're talking about. We can talk about streets maybe at a more dedicated time, but that's really not part of this discussion.
Okay.
You make valid points, I, I just don't know that we can get anything done on it tonight with this.
Any other questions? I, I have a question, it looks like it's a rather large parcel, and this, this plan takes about half of it. Are there plans for, like, Phase B in this, in this division? Anyone?
Perhaps, yeah, Chad Kinjelman.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor and council, thanks for entertaining our proposal tonight. My name is Chad Holtzinger. I work at Chopworks Architecture, and I'm working with Opinion Project to develop this apartment building. And I, I wanted to make a comment both on the, the roads, and I can also answer the question about phasing to potentially. And Tracy, I don't know if you can pull up the third page of the, the materials that we had sent you that, that illustrate the full property. You know, we call it the overall site plan in our packet. But the, our urban idea with the design of the, the block is really to establish something close to streets. And so Councilwoman Medina, I really appreciate your comment because I think having a pedestrian-oriented street frontage connecting to Driscoll to the north is part of our intent. And you can kind of see how we've, we've stubbed the street through to, to kind of punch through the northern boundary, both on what would probably be the Harrison quote-unquote alignment, and then the, I think it's, I forget what it's called, to the west, but maybe it's like the Adams, Adam Street alignment, which is on the west side of the court, and the apartment building. And there is an easement on the parcel to the west of us. We haven't really approached whether or not it's feasible for us to utilize that for this project, but it's a potential we could explore, certainly. As it relates to phasing, we do envision that there could be a a second phase or even a third, fourth, fifth phase into the future. There is density at the three thousand square feet of site per unit available in the R two district. You know, we're only using a hundred and fifty thousand square feet or something like five acres, if my math's any good, which it isn't, it's probably like three acres. But, but there's a reservation of land for future development. And, you know, very early on, we did, we did fit it up with the idea of roads kind of going, connecting to that Driscoll easement in the future and having, having a grid restored there and, and then maybe even to the northern edge of the lot. You know, these are all things that beg the question of fire access, utility extensions, and things like that. So we're not prepared to, to say that there's a timeframe to any of this at this point. Really, it's just a proposal for these fifty apartments. But, but I think we're, we're designing and developing it in such a way that we wouldn't preclude future future development on the property.
Yeah, because I'm afraid if you get your phases done before we ever acquire this right-of-way, people are going to start trying to cut through who don't live there and use this as a through, through streets to get like back to the sheriff's office or, or whatever future development happens here. But regardless of that, I think this is a great project, and these houses are definitely needed in our community.
Well, and I was just going to say, I think, you know, the, to the extent that that eastern street does connect to Driscoll eventually, you know, I don't see any problem with that, that's, that's the way cities work. And I think, you know, cross-access agreement wouldn't be inappropriate necessarily. And, you know, I don't know the, the legal terms or the survey terms for that, but I don't think that's inconsistent with our vision for future phases.
Okay, any, any other questions, comments? Can I hear a motion on this item?
Do we need to open this up?
Yes.
We'll open it up, we'll make a motion, and second it, then we'll open it up.
Mr. Mayor?
No, Mike.
No.
We want to open the public hearing.
We'll open it up for a public discussion.
Yes, thank you.
Are there any comments from the public?
You got one person with their hand raised, Mr. Hughes, Houston Frizzle?
Okay, Houston, go ahead.
Hello, good evening, council, thanks for listening to me, Happy New Year, everyone. So my property is exactly right across the street from this project on Empire. It's my house that is backed up to their driveway there on the west side. Not trying to diminish the Penning Project at all, they've done a lot of good work, I think they really need to just stick with that. Penning Project has their hand out all year looking for donations, they sell themselves as a nonprofit all year. Just for Christmas, they're accepting toys and cash, cash donations for the Christmas for kids, that's a great program, we donate generously every year. Other programs throughout the year. Now, all of a sudden, a nonprofit's trying to build a state-of-the-art fifty-unit apartment complex. Are they just seeing the success of the other properties in town and wanting to get in on, on, on that industry, trying to become real estate? We've already got a lot of low-income facilities in Cortez already, the Hawkins Building, it's a historic property on First Streets in the middle of a remodel to become a low-income complex. Part of the property of the old high school on Seventh Street, also set to become another low-income facility. My thought is maybe the city needs to look at a way to help build some industry as opposed to adding more low-income housing. We're adding a welfare mentality instead of adding good-paying jobs. On the call last week with the Planning and Zoning Committee, the manager from the Cortez Apartments was on there trying to kind of get an idea as to what's going on with this complex. Again, not to diminish anybody, but I would almost guarantee they'd be targeting her tenants initially as they're the low-paying fruit. I mean, it's going to be real simple to move right next door into a brand-new construction. According to the website, the Penning Project's all about serving families. Yet fifty-four percent of these planned units are one-bedroom. That doesn't promote a family. If you've got a single mom or a dad living there, where do they put their kids when they come over for the weekend? To me, that just doesn't make sense. Now, we know the Housing Authority and the Cortez Apartments, they've got zero tolerance policies on their properties. You know, the Cortez Apartments across the street here, their residents don't even smoke cigarettes on the property, they'll step off of the curb into the street to smoke their cigarettes. I mean, she runs a pretty tight ship there, and I applaud her for that. We don't know what kind of property management we're going to be dealing with through the Penning Project, okay? During the hearing last week with the Planning and Zoning, all of the actors on the call were just flat-out selling. They told the board what they thought they wanted, the board wanted to hear on any question they had. Kelly Willis from the Penning Project was so averse to anyone even using the term low income, she kept correcting everyone. Uh, Kelly Willis from the pinion project was so averse to anyone even using the term low income, she kept correcting everyone to say it's affordable housing. The original letter attached to the original application to the city for the conditional use permit said low income. If there's a stigma attached to the low income, that's what we're objecting to, drugs, crime, lower property values, et cetera. If she can't admit to herself that it's low income, maybe she shouldn't be a part of it. The architect on the project um was assuring Lance McDaniel that any storm runoff would flow to Empire and not contaminate the Carpenter Park. This entire property flows to the north, it slopes to the north away from Empire. There's a lot of wildlife on that property that's gonna be displaced, we see deer there all year, uh bobcats, fox, who knows what else? Um, so there's definitely gonna be an effect on the wildlife. They're promoting it as being a walking distance to Main Street, parks, rec center, et cetera. Well, we've already got people cutting through our through our yard, through these lots next to us. There's definitely gonna be a lot more of that with this property, they're gonna be cutting through to uh get up here to City Market or to Liquid Assets or to Cork and Bottle. I don't want my property value decreasing because of another low income development in the city. Now, we bought the property because of the views, because of the seclusion, we've only got the one neighbor right next to us, now we're gonna be losing the views and the seclusion. Um, and the design, I mean, there was the the discussion a few minutes ago about the street access, et cetera. This design puts a runway right to our backyard, their their uh access on the west is aimed right at my backyard, alright, imagine somebody of the complex gets intoxicated, they get into a fight with somebody, they go speeding out of the parking lot, they miss the turn, they're landing in my yard. I don't like that, alright, one on the uh meeting last week, I heard somebody mention that a guardrail would be the uh solution. I don't like that either because that guardrail would be put right on my property. Um, I it seems that the council will always vote unanimously to approve anything that's presented to them. I really hope that somebody tonight can oppose this, I don't like it at all, I think they, I know that it's gonna happen because that's how this is running. But you gotta get that driveway away from my backyard, you know, this this home, this is this was our dream home, you know, this was this is our big investment. It's a great location, it's everything we were looking for, close to the parks, the BMX track, the Carpenter area. We don't want to have to move because our property values are diminishing because of everything I mentioned earlier, crimes, drug, whatever comes along with a low income complex. So those are my concerns and I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Houston.
And Mister Mister Mayor, you're my neighbor, so I know you've got to have some of the same concerns, you're just around the corner from me, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments in public? Okay, can I have a motion on this item? Oh, wait, uh Alston Turtle, Turtle, you have a comment?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council, my name is Alston Turtle and I'm the treasurer for the U Mountain U tribe. Um, also a liaison for the U Mountain U Housing Authority. Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank uh the City Council for the opportunity uh to speak in regards to this multi-housing development. Um, we did get reached out to by the Pinion Project uh to be in a partnership with this and I think uh this is a very great opportunity for uh the County of Monizuma. Um, you know, e- especially here on the the reservation, you know, I think it's important that we establish these partnerships and with something like this, it would really uh start the foundation to a partnership and you know, the tribe, we did write a letter of support to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and this would give an opportunity to our tribal members, young and old, families, big or small, uh the opportunity to venture out off the reservation and explore other options of living. Um, so you know, with with this project, members would still be able to utilize um the services that we have here on the tribe. As well as from the Pinion Project that the help is needed. Uh, we have a two hundred uh member waiting list that dates back all the way to two thousand and ten. Uh, so you know, my job as the councilman for the tribe is to ensure uh that we have the adequate housing and right now uh we've run into a little bit of problem with funding sources, so I think this partnership is something that is very um crucial uh for the relationship to start um here. Um, so you know, again, this would be a remedy for all members of Monizuma County, including tribal members to find uh housing, because right now, as we're seeing with this pandemic, housing is challenging, it is very challenging. You know, we have multiple families living in a household and we don't want to deteriorate any type of relationship within that household uh because of shortage of space. Eight to ten people living in one household, you know, uh so so this type of uh development would really benefit families of all sizes and all housing needs. Um, and if considered, you know, this is the first project of its kind uh that allows the working between the tribal government, city government, county government and Pinion Project to address all the housing needs that are out there. Um, so you know, I'm I'm I and the tribe are heavily in support of this, uh we need more collaborations like this. Uh, we need to form a new partnership, so that way we can better our community as a whole in Monizuma County, so I just wanted to um show my support as far as a councilman on behalf of the U Mountain U tribe and how it would really benefit uh the members within Monizuma County, so again, thank you for for listening to me, uh members of uh the council and the mayor and again, thank uh Pinion Project, Blue Line Development. Um, everybody that was involved uh for reaching out and allowing U Mountain U tribe to be a part of something special. Um, so again, thank you, City Council, for your consideration and this would impact a lot of people in the community in a positive way, so again, thank you for listening to me and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Turtle. Uh, are there any other comments or questions? Uh, Kel- Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to be here and thank you, Mr. Turtle, for your support of not only this project, but of our community all the time, um we've grown to be great partners and I look forward to many more collaborations. Um, I just wanted to reiterate a lot of what Alston said is that we we truly do have a housing shortage in our community. We've been blessed um that we've been called to the table and allowed to come to the table by the Colorado Health Foundation to try to solve the housing issues in our city and our county, so we were able to and put together a team with Blue Line Development, Shopworks, Ute Mountain Ute Tribe and some other heavily invested stakeholders that are looking for the best solution to housing in our community. Mr. Alston, um, Mr. Turtle mentioned that the Ute Mountain Housing Authority has a waiting list of two hundred. Monizuma County's waiting list is three hundred and fifty to three hundred and seventy folks and the wait there is anywhere from two years to four years waiting list, so we definitely have a need in our community. Um, Pinion Project's been in the community a really long time, providing a lot of services, a lot of evidence-based programs. And so um from what we know as a community is that in order for our families to truly thrive and be um really invest in members of our community, we need to help meet basic needs and housing definitely fits in that category, so I would just encourage council to um vote positively on this initiative and um we we have a beautiful plan for fifty units of affordable housing that's much needed and we have all the the right team at the table to get this done, so I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Willis, uh, any other questions or comments?
Mike, we've got two, we've got several people raising their hands.
Okay, uh. Let's see, Tiffany Gear. Go ahead, Tiffany. Okay, go ahead, Tiffany.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I wanna talk on what Houston said, he's got some valid concerns, I know in the past, some of the uh larger businesses that have wanted to come into our area. Citizens inside of city limits and outside of city limits also have the same concerns that kept said businesses from coming in. Um, that's been some time ago, but um I want to um just speak personally as far as patriots are concerned, I cannot speak for a whole group. But uh Mike, I want to apologize um for myself, I was not present, um I all I saw was a short video clip of um you standing outside of the Episcopal Church and people speaking with you and I advise people that, you know, those are things that should go to city council or to a face-to-face conversation. Um, I think um there was an article that was posted by KJSD and then one that was posted on the ninth um through our very liberal newspaper. And I think I just want to state that some of the concerns come from that um, you know, your wife marches with BLM every week, um she did happen to point wasp spray at me as I was walking down main.
The uh agenda?
Uh, public comment is public comment. And I'm trying to to
Tiffany, this is comment on this particular um agenda item, you'll need to wait till the public comment at the end of the meeting, the general.
I'll be happy to do that, but I I do think that Houston has some valid points as far as um where the property is and the type of demographics that um low income housing attracts and I do have a question as to um what what's the standard to be met for people that are able to come into the housing development? In being that there's a lot of one-bedroom apartments that are part of that, as well as the fact that even our um our housing for homeless are were deemed unfit for mothers and children, how how is this different?
Can anyone answer, Tiffany?
Um. Uh, this is Oriana Sanchez with Blue Line Development, uh working on the project with Pinion, I can a- attempt to, I'm not sure I I fully understand the question, um and we're here to talk about uh the use permit rather than who lives there, uh if we if we begin to talk about who lives there, then I I fear we may tread into fair housing issues. But Tiffany, can you, I'm sorry, ask uh reframe that question so I can understand what you're what you're wanting to know.
Okay, so a big part of what sold our um homeless shelter was for women and children and as I noted in what Houston had to say and I will support is a large amount of the housing for what's being proposed are one-bedroom apartments, we recognized through our homeless shelter that that was not adequate for women and children, that type of demographics, so with so many of those apartments being one-bedroom apartments, how are we really meeting the need of broken families?
Okay, okay, that that helps, thank you, thank you for restating that, um. So fir- first I'll say that our unit mix in terms of how many one, two and three bedrooms hasn't been fully determined yet. That will be uh determined here shortly from looking at more market um conditions in Cortez and the surrounding area because we do want to make sure that we're serving the correct um demographic there, so serving the people who really need the housing, so we are looking at that and will um, fully uh define what those um what those one, two and three bedroom counts look like, um other than that um because a- as I said, we we want to ensure that we're serving people who need the housing. Um, other than that, it is, um as we've said, it falls under, yeah, either we don't have to split hairs, low income or affordable housing. Um, there there will be um an income demographic that applicants and residents will need to meet to be eligible for the housing in that we are looking to serve those who are at lower income demographics to make sure that we can um serve those who have struggled with housing and homelessness.
So my question is, is um has your company in doing this gone through the area that we have and incorporating Mr. T- Turtles' um concerns, have we incorporated how many of our people in need of housing through HUD and other applicant sources, determine how many of those people are um single mothers, single fathers? What's the average child count per household needing that affordable income? What are their childcare needs, has that been done?
That's what we're doing right now, you you hit the nail on the head, that's exactly right, what we what we're doing and what we need to understand to make sure that we're serving people in the right way who need it.
Okay, and I I'm gonna suspect once you guys gather those numbers and I can't see without having those numbers posted right now and really understanding the demographics of what's needed, that anybody's really gonna be able to vote on this this evening in an adequate manner that's really substantial to the need of the community and as well as our U Mountain U tribe. I mean, we're neighbors, we need each other, so I I don't see a vote coming of that, but I'm would definitely um love for you to reach out to me and share information about that because there there's other, there's other things that fall into place with families that are displaced or family that are low income that need other things, which I'm guessing is some of why you picked the location that you did and also some of Houston's concerns, which are well validated.
I I'd be happy to have a further conversation with you, if we can absolutely uh e- exchange information and uh we want to make sure we're having conversations with the community we're serving to make sure that uh you know, that this particular housing is is safe and is a part of the community.
I love it, well, every, I think everybody knows where to find me, so.
Okay, I have your name.
All right, well, I appreciate it, thank you, and I'll let the meeting carry on to the next people who would like to speak.
Thank you, uh Kelly, would you like to speak? Kelly, Unrain?
Yes, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm Kelly Unrain and I do just want to say I am in favor um of the project, um I wanted to uh slightly piggyback off what Kelly Willis said and talk about um a two to four-year waiting list, not only for families, but for individuals through the Housing Authority. And those are individuals um who, in the meantime, while waiting for housing often find housing in different areas in our county for over a thousand dollars, if we look at Totten Lake um Trailer Park, they're renting those for over a thousand dollars and it's impossible for families to maintain that. And then what happens is they get evicted and then they have poor credit. And then they get into another house that they can't afford and they get evicted and their credit diminishes further. And then it becomes impossible for them to get a HUD, get into HUD because they don't have any credit and they don't have any references because they couldn't afford the housing that's out there because there's no affa- affordable housing for our families. Um, and I also want to say, I think it's unwise to make broad generalizations um about the types of people that of what reside in low income housing or affordable housing. Um, or to make statements about risk, um. You know, it could be that somebody drives into somebody's fence after a DUI, um but that seems to be a pretty far-fetched risk. Um, and permanent supportive housing really is need in our community.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, I don't see any more hands raised.
Mayor, uh I think that Paul's had his hand raised.
Uh, go ahead, Paul. Uh, unmute yourself, Paul.
Thank you, uh Paul Beckler, um friend, resident, um here on eight one eight Sligo and Cortez. Uh, real estate agent in the area, I'd like to uh echo what Kelly Unrain was just saying, I see it happen many times with um people who are seeking housing, that you know, they're in tough rental situations where they should be able to afford to buy a home, but as they've, you know, ha- had mistakes or haven't been able to meet r- rents and um are just bouncing from place to place and, you know, it's not just homelessness, but underhoused uh families that uh I I could see are gonna benefit from this and uh in a safe environment where um services can be provided to help them climb the ladder and and get out of uh tricky situations. Uh, I don't see it as being something that is a welfare fair empowerment um system as as was mentioned earlier, uh and Ra- Rachel, I also appreciate the fact that you've got an eye on the streets master plan there, that was a an excellent observation and I I hate to hate to speak for anyone else involved in in the pinion project, but um it seems to make a lot of sense to just have a public thoroughfare um put in there, so. That's my two cents worth, thank you all.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, let's see, Julie White White Lee, do you have a comment? Uh, unmute yourself.
I see that button, thank you, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Turtle for the opportunity to drop boundaries uh engage the community as a whole and offer the best of what all of us have to offer is what I see and that's all I want to say, thank you all for being here.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, thank, thank you. Uh, Sheldon Howerton, do you have a comment? Uh, un- unmute yourself, Sheldon. There you go. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have several comments. Uh, we own the property just to the west of all this big hoop-de-doo here. The three houses with the land in between. And I don't know about your easement and whatnot, but we've got an awfully lot of traffic out here. We've got people going down this Empire out here at sixty-five miles an hour. I don't care where the cop shop is. Big trucks, signs posted at each end. Big semis going down a dang road. You, nobody reads nothing, don't pay any attention. And you, and we have a so-called easement out here, I think that's right up to our bedroom window practically. Uh, we've got a lot of problems there. I don't know what to do or what to say. But it looks to me like that I need to talk to somebody personal that has something to do with this. Could, do you, do you, do you hear what I was saying or not? Could you guys hear me or not?
Uh, so what about something personal, Mr. Howerton?
I said I need to talk to someone involved with this that I can sit down and talk with and not be under the gun here, because I had a hard time hearing. So if somebody's got an idea where I can go and come and sit down with someone, I'd be happy to do so. Because we are, we're a major problem just to the west of this mess.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, sir, if you would, this is the city manager. If you would contact me, I will set up a meeting and Tracy and I will sit down and talk with you about this. Or any other staff, maybe Niva. But if you would contact me here at City Hall, I'd be more than happy to set up a time so you can come in and talk to the staff.
Okay. Let's see, Sheldon, did you get your comment answered? Uh, I guess so. I don't see him on the attendees list. Uh, are there any other comments in the public? Okay, seeing none, uh, can I have a motion on this item? Unmute yourself if you wanna speak.
Uh, I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of a conditional use permit to establish multifamily residential housing on property located at TBD Empire Street in the residential multifamily R2 zone as submitted by Christian Cricket of Blue Line Development. Um, agent for property owner Pinion Project through P and Z Resolution Number One, Series Twenty Twenty-One with the following conditions, one through five.
Second.
Hello, I'm on Rick's computer. My computer went off, so we're trying to figure out what went on, but I'm gonna take a vote from Rick's, just so you all know where I'm at. Um, Yossi?
Hi.
Dobree?
Hi.
Huckins?
Hi.
Medina?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Levy?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is uh, Resolution Number Two, Series Twenty Twenty-One. Associate Planner Niva Connolly, please.
All right, good evening, council. Uh, the city's receiving an application for a site plan development to construct a nine hundred and thirty-one square foot addition to the structure at eight oh one East Main Street. Um, this property is doing business as Me Mexico now. Um, for years it was known as Jack and Janelle's Country Kitchen. Um, the site plan was submitted by Representative Robert Nelson for property owner Sofia Rodriguez. So the site plan proposal is to um, roof and wall uh, to basically enclose an existing patio slab um, uh, at the north of the restaurant. Now, the proposed enclosure does not increase dining capacity, since the patio presently has tables and chairs for serving. Uh, according to the application, the existing building is three thousand seven hundred and ninety-two square feet. And the new addition increases the floor area by over twenty percent, which is what triggers this, part of what triggers the site plan review. The site's on commercial highway and proposal doesn't meet all uh, land use code setback requirements. So because this addition is not creating increased dining capacity, it does not trigger any additional parking needs for the project. Um, and so staff did re- review the project for compliance with the landscaping requirements. Uh, the site currently has over eight hundred and eighty-five square feet of existing landscaping, um, meeting the required ninety-three square feet for the addition. Um, it does meet the current ten percent landscaping requirements for the land use code. The project was sent out for agency review, and we did get comments back. Most agencies have no uh, comments or concerns with the addition. But City of Cortez General Services Director did um, have a comment about the fiber net- network. However, this project uh, does not plan to excavate for the patio walls. Um, so there is no um, there is no uh, fiber issues there. Um, so this project is a, is a smaller scale than the last project we heard. Uh, I really don't have anything more to add to this. I do see Mr. Nelson uh, is, has been online for quite a while, so he might have some more to add to this. Um, if, if you have any questions, uh, we're, we're both here.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to say all we're trying to do is provide just an enhanced dining environment. Uh, the patio has been very popular, and just because some of the weather conditions and so on out there, a lot of the customers that uh, frequent the facility have made comments that they'd like to have it still have the openness, but also have a bit of uh, protection as well. So that's what we're trying to do, put a number of windows in it, just to try and enhance the uh, the dining uh, environment. And that's all we're trying to do, so. And that's the only comments I have.
Uh, I have a question about um, so when closing this and kind of adding higher walls, will this affect um, like the site distance on the exits onto Main, Main Street?
No, they're far enough back away from uh, the uh, from Main Street or whatever. It's like almost thirty feet back from Main Street, so now it'll have no impact at all as far as uh, side entrance to the street.
Okay, great.
Right, yeah, that's correct. So if you can see on your screen, um, the enclosure is going to be with this existing slab here. So it's quite a distance from the driveway to pulling out on the main street there.
Okay, I was thinking it was including all this landscaping in front of it, too.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just a slab.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, no more questions. Uh, hope this up for public hearings. Any comments from the public? I don't see any hands raised. Uh, can I have a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site development plan to construct a nine hundred and thirty-one square foot addition to Me Mexico located at eight oh one East Main Street as submitted by Robert Nelson, authorized representative for owner Sofia Rodriguez through Council Res- Resolution Number Two, Series Twenty Twenty-One, with the following conditions, uh, A and B.
Second.
Huckins?
Hi.
Medina?
Hi.
Dobree?
Hi.
Yeah, Rainey?
Hi.
Yossi?
Hi.
Levy?
Hi, thank you.
All right, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number Twelve Eighty-Two, Series Twenty Twenty. City Manager John Doherty?
Thank you, Mayor. At the last council meeting in December, it was presented for first reading to the council um, to uh, have the mayor sign to uh, have the Colorado Department of Revenue collect sales tax for internet sales. If we do not sign this, um, we're too small to collect it, and the state won't do it. So um, this came out of a, uh, I believe it was Wayfair versus somebody a long time ago about um, they don't pay sales tax, and it's all changed. So uh, the Supreme Court made this an option for communities our size to collect our sales tax for online sales. So um, this is our only option, this is the second reading. And staff uh, very highly recommends that council authorize the mayor to um, authorize uh, this, the City of Cortez to join the suits, which is the Colorado Department of Revenue Sales and Use Tax System.
Thank you. Uh, any public comments on this? I don't see any. Uh, uh, can I have a vote on this? Right, can I have a motion on this, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final reading of Ordinance Number Twelve Eighty-Two, Series Twenty Twenty, approving the city to enter into an agreement with the Colorado Department of Revenue for the sale and use tax system to collect, centralize and simplify the collection of taxes for online sales.
Second.
Who, who made the second? I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Mrs. Davis.
Okay, thank you. Rainey?
Hi.
Medina?
Hi.
Huckins?
Hi.
Yossi?
Hi.
Dobree?
Hi.
Levy?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that concludes the public hearings. Uh, there are no unfinished businesses. Uh, under new business, we have a recent addition to the agenda as a result of the executive action during the workshop uh, concerns the city manager contract. Uh, Robert Dobree, would you like to speak?
Yeah, um, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to um, to authorize uh, to authorize uh, our lawyer to, to work out a, the contract that we, that we discussed in the executive act, or in the executive committee, which is a uh, a two percent, a two percent contract raise retroactive to the six month date as well as the um, the three percent uh, this year that we had initially agreed upon.
Okay.
Mike, do you need anything else on that?
No, sir. Unless John thinks I missed something.
Sir, I just, um, I guess I'm questioning the, um, we didn't add this to the agenda. And so I'm questioning whether we can take it up without adding it to, and taking a vote on adding it to the agenda. Just a point of um, procedure, I guess.
Right.
I don't have any question. I just questioned that part, sorry.
We could also do a motion to amend the agenda right now to take it up, and then that matters. Um, so someone would first back up and say, make a motion to amend the agenda to deal with the uh, manager's contract and have a vote on that. Good catch, John.
Um, I, I'd like to ma- uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the manager's, to add the manager's contract as the first order of new business.
Second.
Okay, uh, can we have a vote on this item?
Medina?
Hi.
Dobree?
Hi.
Yossi?
Hi.
Huckins? Rainey?
Hi.
Levy?
Hi. Thank you. Uh, next item under new business is the appointment to Parks, Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board.
Hold on, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have to, we have to take up that, the thing we just added to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't cast my vote. Um, my internet's glitchy, maybe? Did you get my vote, Linda?
Yes, I saw your head shake.
Okay.
Okay, I was glitchy, sorry.
My, my computer, my computer's really messed up too tonight, so.
Okay, to be clear, to be clear, it's a yay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, and, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion that I um, that I, that I previously made um, to, Linda, do you have that? Can I just go with what we already said, or do you want me to make it again?
Go ahead, and if you would say it just one more time, I'm pretty sure I have it clear, but if you don't mind, do you have it written?
Um, to authorize Mike Green to, to adjust the, or to, to work out the contract with the city manager um, for a two percent, two percent uh, raise retroactive to the six month date as well as the, the three percent raise um, for this year that we had previously, previously done as part of his um, as part of his, sorry, I'm spacing out there, as part of his review. Thank you, yeah, contract.
Retro to July?
Yeah.
July ninth.
To the start date.
Okay, and second was made by Amy.
A second. Amy.
Yes, all right. Do- Dobree?
Hi.
Yossi?
Hi.
Huckins?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Medina?
Hi.
Levy?
Hi, thank you. Uh, now, uh, under new business, um, first item is the appointment to the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board. Director of Parks and Recreation, Dean Pomquist?
Yes, good evening, City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board of the City of Cortez consists of nine voting members and two members shall be high school youth. Currently, two adult vacancies and two youth vacancies exist for the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board. The city has received a letter of interest from Lucia Story uh, to fill one of the adult vacancies. The, the advisory board members reviewed Lucia Story's letter of interest and gave their unanimous support via email for uh, her to serve on the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board. Uh, this evening, uh, at the council work session, the council interviewed her uh, prior to making its decision.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, uh, any questions or comments from the council on the appointment of Lucia Story? Uh, I don't see any. Uh, can I have a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to appoint Lucia Story to fill an open seat on the Parks, Recreation and Forestry Advisory Board.
Okay.
Second.
Huckins?
Hi.
Rainey?
Hi.
Yossi?
Hi.
Dobree?
Hi.
Medina?
Hi.
Levy?
Hi, thank you. Uh, item B on the unfinished business is acceptance of twenty sixteen audit. City Manager John Doherty, please.
Okay, I'm having problems with my computer now, too. Yes, at the last council meeting, the auditing firm of Mayberry and Associates presented the 2016 audit to the council. Now, it takes the council's acceptance of that audit to put 2016 to bed and then I will notify the auditors tomorrow and we will get our finalized copies and I can start distributing them to the various organizations that have, require them. So after acceptance of this, 2016 will be done. Lorraine Trotter is currently working on 2017 and it's going a lot smoother, so this will be the worst of what we have to go through.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Can I have a motion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept as presented the 2016 financial statements with independent auditors report as submitted by Mayberry and Associates.
Second.
Dobree.
Hi.
Huckins.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Medina.
Hi.
Yossi.
Hi.
Levy.
Hi. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Phase One Fiber to the Airport Budget. Director of General Services, Rick Smith.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
This is an exciting project and we're, we're calling it Phase One Fiber to the Airport. As you might recall, at the last city council meeting in December, city council authorized a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, to partner with Montezuma County to construct fiber down to County Road G and Highway Intersection 491. This project, from the city perspective, would be a first phase of fiber to the airport. The 2020 city revenues were better than projected and some surplus is available for some capital projects. The equipment fund balance grew due to the non-purchase of any equipment in 2020. As we talked about in December, Montezuma County has budgeted $300,000 in their county budget in 2021. The CCN Enterprise needs to contribute a matching $300,000 for the project. The CCN and county staff are currently, we're developing a budget and a scope of work for the project. The CCN Enterprise plans to expand broadband service along that area of the route for businesses and residents. Phase one of the project will make broadband services available from Fifth Street on South Broadway down to the south city limits. The future phases of Phase Two would get fiber on out to the airport. The joint project, which is pretty exciting, provides an opportunity to get twice the amount of fiber broadband network built for the cost of the match. And it provides a gateway on the southern part of the county, of the city, excuse me, for potential partners such as the U Mountain U Tribe, CDOT, Southwest Colorado Council of Governments, and it opens up broadband in a much-needed area, which is the southern half of Montezuma County. This project has regional impacts for broadband and the way I look at it, it's a win-win-win for the city and the county for economic development. One way to look at it is the city and the county each save half the cost to build if they were going to build it on their own. And I'd like to thank Jim Candelaria and Jim McLean for taking the lead on this project. It really is the county opening up broadband down to the southern part. As in the past, the CCN Enterprise project funding would need to be in the form of a loan from the City Equipment Fund to the Enterprise Fund. The City Equipment Fund is funded, as you might know, from an eighth of a cent sales tax, which is dedicated. In 2020, the Equipment Fund balance grew by approximately $350,000 because we didn't purchase any equipment at all in that year. There, thereby, we created a surplus. The 2021 equipment purchases planned in the budget are already underway and, and doesn't affect the balance surplus. The physical impacts, the City Equipment Fund surplus loan and the Phase One Fiber to the Airport project was not included in the 2021 city budget. The formal budget amendment to the City Equipment Fund budget and the CCN Enterprise budget would need to be approved. I'd like to just add that this is a real positive project for the area, one that's really needed, especially down in the southern part. And it really is a benefit to the whole community.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions or comments from the council?
I just want to make a comment that I have participated in these meetings from the county standpoint in my job as a GIS specialist.
Okay.
Just for transparency.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments?
I would like to comment that this is one of those infamous moments where we get to work hand-in-hand with the county and I'm looking forward to it. So great job spearheading this, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Amy. Any other questions, comments? Okay, could I have a motion on this item?
All right, I'll make a motion to amend the City Equipment Fund budget and the CCN Enterprise Fund capital expenditures budget to provide a $300,000 match for the Phase One Fiber to the Airport project.
Second.
Medina.
Hi.
Yossi.
Hi.
Rainey.
Hi.
Dobree.
Hi.
Huckins.
Hi.
Levy.
Hi. Thank you. There are no draft resolutions or ordinances. Under item, next, other items of business, the council will adjourn to executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS Section 24-6-4024B and for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E. Discussion will be held on the Cortez Community Network. Council will go into pause right now and will adjourn into executive session. So mute your mics. Get on your phones.
I need the host to let me back in the meeting. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mayor.
Okay, I can't get my video to work. It says the host has stopped it. John, can you turn me back on, please?
You need to click the start video button.
I keep getting the message. You cannot start your video because the host... Okay.
All I can do is ask to start it.
Okay, here we go. Alrighty. Thank you. The time is now 9:08. And the executive session has concluded. The participants in this executive session were the following. Myself, Michael J. Labey, Rachel Medina, Arlena Yasi, Amy Huckins, David Rainey, Robert Dobry, Mike Green, John Doherty, and Rick Smith. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion go into executive session, occurred during the executive session, or that any improper actions occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask you state your concerns now. Hearing none. I... Next agenda item is... Okay. We'll return to the regular session. And we're gonna... Mike Green, do you want to make an announcement about opting?
What I need you to do is to make a motion to authorize the city attorney to bring ordinances to you setting up and opt out of Senate Bill 152 election question.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Robert, would you make a motion, please?
Sure. Yes, I'd like to... Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct the staff and city attorney to bring ordinances for the city of Cortez to opt out of SB 152. For an election to opt out of SB 152.
Second. I have a motion.
Huckins?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Yasi?
Aye.
Dobry?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye.
Labey?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen participation. Comments may be limited to four minutes per person. Please comment on items not listed as public hearing. Counsel may or may not respond to comments. Okay.
Mayor, just to let you know, I'll be keeping time and rather than interrupt people, I'll just give a four sign for you.
Okay.
When their four minutes is up.
Okay. We have a hand raised. Houston Frizzell, go ahead.
Mr. ... Okay, Mayor, I'm sorry about that. Regarding the Pinion Projects, projects right across the street from me. Earlier during the hearing, Mr. Sheldon, on the west end of the proposed development, expressed his concerns that he's having a hard time hearing, that he can't tell what's going on. He wants a personal one-on-one meeting with somebody to know what the project is. I think the motion should have been tabled right then so that he could be involved with the decision. You all went ahead and voted unanimously, as I said you would, to approve the project. I really disagree with that decision. I think it should have been tabled. Mr. Sheldon across the street should have been involved with the decision. His voice should have been heard. His concerns should have been heard. The thing should have been tabled. You shouldn't have voted on it tonight. It should have been tabled. Let him have his concern because he's disabled, can't hear what's going on on an online meeting. And then you guys pick it up another day. That's where I'm at. You know I don't agree with it. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Tiffany Gere, go ahead. Unmute yourself, Tiffany.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry about that. A couple of questions I forgot to ask is in the income-based housing, since low income is offensive to some, I'll respect that. Where's the money for this housing coming from? Who's paying for this? Nobody knows?
Mike Green, can you answer that?
Um, I believe Ms. Willis explained part of it at the P and Z meeting. But you'd have to contact Pinion Project directly and speak with them.
Okay, and Mr. Green, you're not privy to the information of where these sources, financial sources are coming from?
Um, it wasn't relative to the discussion of the change in use or the conditional use permit, so no, ma'am.
Okay, and the other question I had is in the housing. I know traditionally for the housing that we have is monitored by HUD sanctions, meaning if you have a domestic violence, you have a drug charge, you have a felony, you will not therefore be able to receive the income-based housing in other facility. Is there same or similar requirements set up for the new housing that's proposed?
Ma'am, I think you'd have to talk to Ms. Willis about that. That's not something that was relevant to the conditional use permit application.
So my concern is, is as a council, city manager, mayor, and attorney, is we don't have the demographics of the type of people as per housing needed, whether it's single homes, which a majority of the income-based housing we have is already has handicapped housing available. We don't know, and it was stated that we do not have the demographics as far as housing when over 40% of the housing is single-person housing. That is not there. The land use code for that was passed, and it's going to have to come up for re-review, but the initial work is already done. And there's no homework done as to who is going to determine, you know, does the rental record meet it? Does the HUD housing standards meet it, just as there is for any other income-based housing? And as, as was stated by another speaker, by Houston, you know, there are people who have a voice that have an ability not to be able to participate in this. And yet, the vote was not tabled. It was put out there and was passed anyway without the public knowledge and support and full concerns being heard.
Okay.
Is there an opportunity to retract that vote and re-table it?
Any comments, Mr. Green? Normally, we don't discuss the public hearing comments in the public comment, but Mr. Green, do you want to continue or do you want to take this up?
Well, I was just going to say, this is not a dialogue. This is not an opportunity to bring things back up for votes. It's getting, you know, your comments into the record. And so that's what we've done. We've got your comments. And Ms. Gere, thank you very much.
Thank you. Krista? Do you have a comment, Krista? Krista, can you unmute yourself, please?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
I agree with Tiffany. I have a household...
Krista, excuse me, I will need your name for the record, please.
Krista Gustamontes.
Montes?
Gustamontes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I agree 100% with Tiffany's questions. You know, there needs to be some concern brought to that before it was just voted to give away money that you have no idea where it's coming from. You know, how do we... That's not very transparent. And it's quite a concern not knowing what the regulations are going to be for these individuals that need help. Whether they're going to be a convicted child molester, felon who committed attempted murder, you know, or honest-to-goodness person that really needs the help. That should be the biggest concern for all of you sitting on City Council.
Thank you, Krista. I'd like to remind people that we're not making comments about the public hearing we've already had in the public comment session. Okay. Are there any other comments in public? Okay, seeing none. City Attorney?
I see more hands.
Okay. Okay. Houston Frizzell. Go ahead, Houston.
Not to be a thorn in your side, we're not making comment against something that's already in the past. He wasn't allowed his opportunity to voice his comment because he didn't hear what the hell was going on. You need to table that motion. You need to retract that vote, whatever the hell you need to do to allow Sheldon across the street give his opinion before you all make a vote. You all make a vote unanimously on everything without all the facts. Give him an opportunity. He's right next to the proposed development.
Thank you. Okay, Tiffany Gere. You're muted.
There you go. Back what I tried to previously speak on with you, Mike. I want to apologize. I was not part of any indiscriminate confrontation that happened with you on Saturday. For wherever you feel my part stands in that as a patriot or a leader, I want to apologize for that. I don't support a lot of what happened. I've told people that if that's a conversation you wanted to have, it should have come up in a face-to-face conversation or over a city council meeting where an entire group can be addressed of their concerns. I know that seeing it on my own, that your wife marches with BLM every week, that she marched up into where patriots were at by herself, carrying a sign, challenging patriotism as being racism. I was a person she pointed wasp spray at, and for those who do not know, wasp spray shoots 20 feet and acts the same as pepper spray when I said nothing to her as I walked the opposite side of the sidewalk, where people are seeing some of these things and claiming that threats are made and where you've visibly been seen, that I can verify by myself going back and standing with BLM. I think that's where some of the concern comes from. If there's any way to maybe clarify what your stance is, I'm not asking for that right now, but clarify how you're neutral when we've invited you to numerous patriot rides and you don't show, but have been seen with them on numerous occasions, I would welcome that conversation with you. And I chose not to report your wife for pointing wasp spray at me.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Any other comments from the community? Seeing none. Uh. Next item on the agenda, there are no city attorneys reports. Uh, city managers report. There are none.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, I do have, I do have some things I need to bring up.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Thank you, sir. Um, first of all, and most of this stuff should have been discussed in a um, work session, but I first off, the retreat that councils asked for. I do have a person to facilitate. I can forward you that information on that. I all I have gotten from the person so far is what the cost would be. And it's, um, a little variation. The max would be a hundred dollars an hour. But, um. So I do have somebody I think would be very good, um. But what we need to talk about at some point is what the council is looking for to achieve from this retreat. Um, beyond that, um, what time do we want to do it? How long do you want it to last? Um, in December, you said you wanted to do it outside, um, probably in the park or something. Since then, it's gotten rather cold during the mornings. Um, so we, do we still want to do it outside or do we want to do it inside? Do we want to do it in town or I have a place out of town? We can do it at no cost. Um, and then the last question I would have is what staff present do you want? Do you want all the department heads? Or do you just want Linda and I? Or do you need the city attorney there? I know there's a lot there, but, um. I think at some point we need to sit down as a group and talk about what, what council is looking to do. And I'm not sure what the work, next meeting work session looks like, but I'm envisioning this gonna take a little time to work out. Um, what council's gonna want out of this retreat, so that's the first thing I'm tossing out there. Um, let council, yes.
Can I, can I catch you request? Uh, next work session is Patrick Ronadelli.
Okay, so it's gonna be booked up again.
For two, he's doing the two hour training with council.
I would like more time than a work session for, for a retreat. I think
Yeah, I'm not talking.
For me, I, I okay, well, uh, we were offered the, the Destination Grill, uh, conference room for free. Um, and if we did on the, on a weekend, we could fi, pay, pay for lunch there or something. Because I think we would need a few hours and maybe a facilitator. Um, personally, I just think it would be a good idea to grasp or to get an idea of what our shared goals are, because I realize I had all these ideas and I get a little too ambitious. And so I'm like, I want to get this done and this done and this done and this done. And I think it'd be good for us as a group to kind of decide what we can accomplish together, what we want to see. Um, what our visions are and just, and collaborate and really form as a group. Um, but if people don't feel safe yet to do that inside, um, for hours, then I, then I'm open to other ideas, but I think this is this is gonna be vital, especially with the new city manager coming on and what we, you know, figuring out what we want, what we'll expect from the next one. Um. Yeah.
Uh, John, I had sent you an example of a, of, I think the city of Aspen, um, their retreat schedule, so I can send that out to council to see if they would want to use any of those items or if they like the schedule how, as it is. It is, the way it's written out is, is two days, but we don't have to have all of those elements since we've already been going.
Send, send that out early now. Council, what are your feelings about the retreat? Besides Rachel, earlier. Uh, John, you mentioned a, an alternate, uh, venue out, out of town somewhere.
The town of Mankus is offered their.
Put your microphone down.
The town of Mankus offered their community center, which would hold a hundred and fifty people. So obviously we could well spread out there and even if people wanted to come over, we'd still have plenty of rooms spread out and, um, yes, we would order, order in sandwiches or lunch or something. Um.
Thank you.
I think, I think that there is a sense of urgency to get some semblance of, of team building. Um, you know, we, we have yet to be in the same room altogether. And there's been a lot going on. This is a pivotal moment to just hinge, reframe. Um, we have some big tasks on hand. And I, I think, yeah, sooner than later. And I really enjoy the, the thought of a lot of space. And, and heck, I'll, I'll take a meal too.
Yeah, I think this is a really crucial time for us to find alignment, especially like with an outgoing city manager and incoming city manager. We definitely need to come to an agreement on the things we need to prioritize for the city. And see if there's hopefully aligned with our goals amongst this group.
Okay, David, how do you feel about meeting indoors?
How many people are gonna be there?
Um. Council members and uh, administrator, um, we haven't quite decided how many there's gonna be yet. Uh, I don't, I don't want there to be a large crowd, you know, because of the COVID regulations and concerns.
And what about the ventilation?
Uh. I'm not sure about the ventilation in Mankus, uh, or the, or the welcome center. Cocos. We have to check into that.
Okay, yeah.
There's probably not a perfect.
A little long.
Uh, preferably.
Anxious about getting together, um, sorry, but as long as our numbers are still going up, but you know, it's I hate for anybody on the council especially to get sick.
I, I hear your concerns. Uh, I, ideally if we had it outdoors, uh, we could do something like that. Uh, it's too cold now.
Well, we could throw snowballs at each other.
Or ice balls, as the case is right now.
What, snow angels?
Um, well, maybe we could circle back on the outdoors idea. Um, and everybody could just wear their ski slope outfits and, and of course mask as well.
I'm, I'm from Buffalo, New York, so the cold doesn't bother me at all. I like it. Okay.
Darty?
Yes.
Could you check on the, what, I don't know whether it's a gazebo or what you call it over there by the, uh, the duck pond where the ducks don't go. Um, that's got a big open area in it, but yet it'd be covered. And if you got some heaters and spaced people out in there. This is, um, I can't remember whether we have to publish this as a public meeting. Um, and allow the public to show or not. I don't remember. Um, but that would be a big open area where you could keep space to be outdoors but covered.
Is that the pavilion you're talking about?
Yes, sir, the pavilion. I'm sorry. And it's pretty much nobody goes there.
I like it.
I'm okay with that.
Does anybody have a source for heaters?
Maybe some of those propane heaters we could rent.
Yeah.
Rent them. We can rent them, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's an idea. Good idea. Yeah, thank you, Amy. Maybe we could rent one or two of those. They're, they're pretty reasonable, you know, just for a couple hours' use. We could, we could, uh, help the local community turn.
Thanks. Um, are we looking at Saturdays then?
Uh, I'm free Saturdays. It might be a good time.
I could put it together, a doodle poll like what Ben had done for other meetings.
Okay. Yeah.
And then I'll send that out so we can establish a day.
Okay.
And then Mr. Green. Times also, Rachel, please.
Yeah, like how long or?
Well, yeah, do we want to start it at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock? Um, afternoon, earlier in the morning?
Um, probably through the middle. Yeah.
I would say after it started warming up a little. So say ten o'clock until um, at the most tell her four hours at most.
That sounds about right. Tended to.
Um, said outdoors. I'll check in the propane heaters. Staff present.
I'd like, I'd like you to be involved, John.
Okay.
Uh. Uh, I don't know who else. Linda, maybe?
That's who I was thinking. Sorry, Linda.
Linda, would you be okay with the Saturday, Saturday retreat?
Uh, that's, that's not a problem. We would probably need to record it. Um, I'm, I'm pretty positive we have to do that, Mike. Is that correct? No?
I've never seen them recorded.
Okay. I'm happy.
I can't.
I guess we can do some research on that if we have to or not. I, I'm fine if we don't. I'm fine if we do. Just
Okay.
Be sure we do it right. That's all.
Yeah. It'd be nice to get together.
Nice to have you together.
Oh, this is so exciting.
Yeah. Good, uh, good news. Okay, uh.
Okay, I've got some more things.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, just to let council know, um, I talked with, um, the police department today and, um, have decided that the reopening of City Hall will be January twenty fifth at eight AM. Um, next week, we will be open on Monday and Friday between eleven and one to take, um, payments. Otherwise, it would require a, an appointment with the staff. Um, care's distribution. Um, I have thank you very much for, to the committee who got the money out, um, even after the feds extended the deadline, we still met the one that was originally put to us to get the money out of here by December thirty first. And we were quite successful. Um, so the totals for the whole program uh, for the whole county, there were a hundred and sixty one participants or awardees. Uh, fifty seven of them, the city of Cortez gave money to. Um, the city of Cortez distributed a hundred and eighty nine thousand, three hundred and one dollars, which was twenty nine percent of the total that we were given. Um, so a hundred and eighty nine of the six hundred and fifty five, three thirty two total that was distributed throughout the county. Um, so I believe that all the businesses were extremely grateful for what they received. And, um, wanted to extend it to thank council for that. Um, and the mayor and John and AJ for actually drumming up the business and going out and um, giving it directly to the businesses. Uh, and the last thing I have is, um. All of us have been receiving concerns about what has been happening on weekends in town. And I have been repeatedly talking with Chief Knuckles um, about how to tamp it down. Um, both sides are pointing fingers and getting upset, but I believe, um, at this point, Chief, are you on here? Um. I know we've talked about it a lot. You talked about with the city attorney and both of you are on here, so I'd like to turn it over to the chief to talk about, um, what our plans are for going forward. Chief?
Hmm. Yes, John, I'm on here. I'm trying to, uh, I started and I'm having issues with video, but anyway, um, yeah, um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for, uh, letting me speak, John, in, in, in some of your time. Um. Uh, two weeks ago on Saturday, there was an incident that has really blown up in social media. Um, um, a lot of, uh, accusations that the police department is not handling, um, these situations appropriately. Um. Uh, the, the problem we had is, uh, well, first off, Saturday, there were three calls from the peace and justice walkers made to the police department. The police department responded to all three calls. Um, one call was an individual that lives in the area that was non-involved. Um, he has some, uh, um, other disabilities that causes him to, um, uh, yell out and stuff. Um, so, so that was a, a non-incident. However, it was reported by a peace and justice marcher and the officers responded to that situation. The other two calls, the officers responded to the callers. Um, didn't want to pursue any action. So the officers responded as requested. Um, talked to the caller. No action was requested. Um, the officers, you know, uh, handled the situation so the caller could, could um, get out of the area and, um, uh, they went on about their business. Officers were in the area. Um, there were three officers on duty, um, for the whole city during this time. Um, other calls of service were, service, uh, were coming in. Um, for instance, there was a call for service at the park where there was, um, juveniles on the thin ice. Um, which was a priority, um, as you would imagine. Um. Uh, maybe a little more than, than, um, some protesters I would, I would, uh, suggest. Um, and then another call was an active or a theft in progress, which was, uh, another relatively high priority call. Um, they would handle those calls and they would come back into the area and monitor the activity. Um. Uh, one of the, the peace and justice, um, marchers was very upset at some of the conduct when the, the patriots come down and intermingled with, with the group. Um, she was very upset and, um, kicked off this, um, kind of a social media uh, frenzy, um, of, of, uh, quite frankly, disinformation. Um, I received the email on Sunday. Um, and was kind of shocked at what was going on. I immediately got my patrol lieutenant, um, to check into what was going on. Um, when he come in Monday morning, we found out all calls for service were answered. I made contact with the, um, individual that was very upset and sent the email and and, um, had a conversation and found out, um, she never called the police. Yet was upset at the police for not acting. Um, and then kind of it snowballed into, um, everybody else on social media kind of jumping on the bandwagon and, um, sending out emails that were um, commented on and, and sent forward. Um, so once I talked to that individual and we kind of figured out what was going on, um, uh, we do what we always do. We started investigating. Had she reported it Saturday, we would have started investigating. However, we start this investigation kind of behind the, you know, we're, we're behind. We're behind the eight ball now because of everything that's going on. But we start investigating and, um, uh, the investigation leads to, um, the identification of six individuals who will be charged with harassment. So, um, I think I think when these things happen, um, you know, I, I would encourage people to reach out to me. Um, so that I can, um, explain the process and explain what's going on. Um, and, and you know, either there are worries that nothing's happening because things are happening behind the scene. Um, sometimes things aren't, uh, um, it's happened as quickly as It happened as quickly as we would like them to, but they they do happen. Um, this investigation has taken a little bit of time because we had to identify some people. That we weren't familiar with, however, that was done. So, um, if if councils um, received any of these emails, uh, had any questions, uh, I want you to know that. That as soon. As it was reported, even, you know, even though it was through an email that I received that was, that was um. Very upset at us. Um, that investigation was started. And that's how we handle everything. Uh, the bottom line is, if if you want the police department to to intervene in something that's going on, you have to call us. Um. I'm not going to, um, you know, second guess the officers that were on on duty. There was some question about, well, they should have known. Um. I I I don't, I don't agree with that always. Um, you know, they're typically looking for a very aggressive behavior and in the video. Um. Even though the Patriots were intermingled with the peace and justice walkers, it it doesn't appear to be super aggressive. They they're, they just intermingled. Was it? Um. It it wasn't a a nice thing for them to do, you know, for lack of better better words, but. Um, it I it didn't appear to be overly aggressive. Um, the audio. They were yelling. One individual that will be charged was um, very voiceless and um. Um, was shouting profanity and because of that, he will be charged for that. So the bottom line is is w- we need to be made aware of of things that are going on so that we can um. Uh, respond and investigate and take the appropriate action. There's a fine line between exercising your First Amendment rights and. Um, you know, and harassment and things like that. And, you know. The city, John, uh, Mike, myself, we've had these conversations all summer. Um, uh, on how we navigate this this fine line. And and still allow these groups to exercise their constitutional rights and. You know, however, this time they they cross the line and charges will be filed. So if you have any questions for me, please um, ask them and um, I will answer. And I would also ask that. Um, hopefully, th- there are no future incidents, but if if. If council has a question or they receive an email. I I would really suggest getting ahold of the city manager and setting up a meeting with me. Um, so that you can get the facts, so you can answer your constituents um, based on 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 the facts. So, please consider that.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, I'd I'd like to add to the chief's been very cooperative, you know, when there've been complaints and. And videos and stuff like that. And uh, I commend you for having these conversations with the groups. Uh, it it means a lot to. Have a, have find commonalities between the groups and. And we appreciate the police department for what they're doing. Uh, and thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
You bet. And just so council knows, um, Thursday, I'm going to meet with um, uh, via Zoom. Uh, with the peace and justice walkers so that that we can have a dialogue. You know, they don't know me, I don't really know them. COVID has been kind of weird it, um, as far as, you know, the new chief and trying to reach out to some of these groups. And have these conversations. So I suggested to them, if they were willing, that I would um. Uh, participate in a Zoom and and take their questions and 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 have this conversation. And I'm a big advocate of of communication. I think, I think that solves a lot of problems. Um, and I think we're seeing communication is not happening. Um, a a lot of jump into conclusion. So, but but actual communication is not happening. I'm really trying to foster that with both groups. And um, I just want you to be aware that 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 is gonna happen Thursday.
Thank you, Chief, for participating in that Zoom meeting with the group.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chief. Um, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Okay, uh. City Council Committee reports. Has anyone got any city council meetings? Besides me? Board meetings. Okay, uh, ended the. Library uh, advisory uh, board meeting uh, yesterday. No, today, yeah, it was twelfth, uh, just a few hours ago. Uh, it's kind of a meet and greet um, meeting. Uh. It's the first time a lot of the co- board members have gotten together with the with the new members and uh. Uh, we introduced each other and gave gave kind of a little bit of background, what's going on. And uh, we met Alicia, the new uh, library director and and she gave us some uh, projects. Uh, pro- ideas for the future capital projects, including the roof and the HVAC and uh. And uh, she's uh, mentioned that there's gonna have a a training on February fifth with the Colorado State Library. For anyone wanting to get more information on communications and library work. Uh, she's working on the uh, collection development. Uh. And uh, once the library starts opening, uh, she's gonna be uh, uh. Talking about social distancing and um, you know, especially where patrons are concerned. Uh, and we're talking about having our monthly advisory board meetings, maybe mu- uh, every month now. So, and it was a pretty nice get together. We got to meet each other and and uh. See, see how things are going. So we're gonna meet in one more month from now. Uh, any other committees, board meetings?
Mayor.
Seeing none, I. Wait, Arlena.
There.
Yes.
Uh, I don't have an uh, update because we haven't had a meeting in a while, but uh, I just want to take this, take a moment to express. Uh, my gratitude to our pu- local public health department and our healthcare providers that are working to get the vaccine out into the community. Um, they didn't ha- really have like a blueprint to follow and they pulled together collaboratively and. Um, because of it, our our southwest region. It is administering the highest amount of vaccine um, out of the state where we were at. At the last report that they put out, we were at seventy six percent of like our allotment, having been um, given out. Um, and the rest of the state, the hi- the next highest was like fifty percent. So. I giving huge kudos to our local healthcare uh, providers that are trying to get that vaccine out and trying to keep our community healthy. So. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, before I leave, I just kind of remind everybody to stay safe, uh, keep calm. Uh, be kind to one another. Uh, don't believe everything you hear on social media. Uh, and have a good evening, folks. Good night.
Good night.